...order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Cameron?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Daney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. One item we have this evening on our agenda is under the Finance and Golf Committee. Chairman Daney?
Thank you, Mr. President. When I received this packet, I stayed up late and went through every single page. And after I finished, I realized that I'm going to let Jeff explain to the board exactly what we have here. So with that, please.
I'll handle this as we move through the...
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Valerie.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it very much.
Let me just remind all of you how we usually go through this. We do a capital budget in the fall prior to starting into our operating budget in the winter so that we have the time to look at some of our larger projects separately. This is a five-year capital plan, so you will get very familiar with most of these projects because you'll have an opportunity to see them coming about five years in advance. What we typically have done is that I have gone through the new projects first because you haven't seen them before. And then if anyone wants to talk about projects that will be coming in this year's operating budget, we can go through those as well. But if that's all right with the board, I would start with the brand-new projects. Most of those are in sewer, but the first two we start out with are in water. So if you'll go to page seven in the Water Department, you'll see the first new project we have is the Lake Street pump upgrade and modeling for 1617, $467,000. And some of these water projects are still dependent upon a final decision relative to a long-term water supply, but I think this one we're going to need. So do you want to talk about that a little bit again?
It ultimately comes down to the decision on Elgin or Jawa or a combination of. If we go 100% Jawa, then we would not do the Lake Street pump upgrade. We'd be putting it towards a Jawa pump upgrade, or pump, new pump station, actually. But if we do the 50/50 or the 100% Elgin, this pump station, which is the one on Lake Street that exists right now, would get a retrofit. So that's what this project is. And right now, we actually have a US EPA grant that can be applied towards this project that they're telling us we need to spend that money. So that's why we've been kind of discussing getting that decision made, and we'll be able to move forward right away.
This was the grant that we got some time ago to put towards the well out west. Back when we thought we were going to need that and have hung on to that and repurposed it a couple of times with the US EPA's approval. So now they're calling us, saying, "Make up your mind." And we said, "We will do that. We will take your half million soon."
Is there a specific deadline on that?
No.
We've been extending it for several years, and they're basically saying...
Are we sure the money's there?
Yes.
They have said that it is, but they said it's running out.
Can we just get a check and tell them we'll cash it when we use it?
Yeah. We tried to apply it to actually the Oneida Water Tower. They said that that's maintenance and it can't be applied towards that. Needs to be a new, like, this one would qualify. They've already told us it would qualify because we're basically replacing the pump station, so...
Glad you mentioned water towers. Some people have mentioned to me that it's time to paint our water tower.
That's why we have that program in there now. Yep.
We'll get there. Page nine is the next new project. And this, as well, depends upon the final decision about a long-term water source. This is the infrastructure improvements that are associated with either Elgin and/or Jawa. And this is the meat, as you can see by the cost, of what we will be doing in the next 10 years.
Right. This covers the first portion because this goes for five years. This takes a big chunk of those improvements that are needed. When we get into the next five years, that'll be the remaining of that capital that Christopher Burke's firm has shared with us.
Those are the only two water projects that are proposed new this year, and we'll be able to finalize those soon, I believe. Then moving on to page 20 in the sewer, the next several new projects relate to our sewer system. The first one is on page 20, and that's a new tertiary filter, $3,875. You want to talk about that? And our financing, again, this is one of the low-interest loans from the EPA.
Right. This is replacing our sand filters that we have out there. The plan here, as you see, we're going to have a lot of work down at the treatment plant. Plan is getting to that point where we need to start replacing things. And this is one of the first items that comes into mind. This is right before it goes out to the river. We have to meet those FLO limits. And this sand filter needs to be working. And right now, it's in need of major repairs. The wear plates are, have holes in them and everything, so we're looking to just totally replace it with a new system. And that's what this will do to get us to make sure we don't have any issues with compliance.
What is the lifespan of this new filter?
Typically, I mean, you're going to have maintenance, but typically, when we put these type of things in, like, the stuff that's there now has been in there from the '70s or whatever, so we'd be expecting it to last for 30-plus years, but it will need maintenance during that period as well. But the system should be in place. Whichever system we end up going with, it'll be, the plan would be to keep it in there for 30-plus years.
And if we don't get that fixed right away, I'm assuming we're fined?
If we start to have violations, then we would start to get in trouble with the EPA.
Page 22 is the next new sewer project, and that is our nitrification tower media and spray arm replacement. It's replacement, but a new project. Again, we're looking at the EPA for this funding.
Right. It's the same thing. The media life is 20 years. It's beyond 20 years at this point, so we need to start planning to get that replaced. We have it out in the, you know, 18, 19, 19, 20. One of the things, earlier this year, we approved Facility Plan Update with Strand Consultants, and they're actually looking at all these facilities. They'll be done with their report by the end of the fiscal year. Our plan is, we know that these are out there, they're going to kind of work with us to find out what the best solution is for all this. There's an option out there right now that we might not even need the nitrification tower, that we'd be able to go with a different solution. So it's one of those things, we put it in there because we know something needs to happen with it. It might be a matter of replacing the media and the arms, or it might be a process of totally eliminating it altogether. But this Facility Plan Update will tell us what the best option is long-term.
And this price is worst-case scenario?
Yeah.
Good.
The next new project relative to sewer is on page 24, and that is our Devon excess flow, which we have some issues with. We've had some issues with it, and in fact, I'm told we had an excursion the other night with it when we had all the rain, so we'll be, that will be noted. And we're working with Cook County and MWRD to see if we can't work out some agreement short of building a whole new treatment plant on that facility. So that one is out in 17, 18, half a million dollars.
Right. This project by itself is, the tanks are concrete, built back in 1929. Concrete starts to crack with time, and we've got cracks in the tanks. They're leaking. So what we're proposing, similar to what we did or we're going to be doing with the Country Creek Lift Station, we're putting a lining on that. We're going to do the same type of system here, line the tanks, they'll be good for another 50 years. So that's what we're planning to do. As far as the excursion that Valerie talked about, with our new NPDS permit through the EPA, they now have put a mandate on 85% removal on all of our facilities, including this excess flow facility. What that means is the influence coming in the plant is at, for suspended solids and BOD, is at whatever level. By the time it exits into the creek, it needs to have 85% removal of that suspended solid. We're going back and forth with the EPA right now because this is an excess flow facility, which means the majority of what it's getting is rainwater, so it's diluted. And trying to meet an 85% removal on a diluted wastewater is going to be very difficult. And we just had, last week with the rains and the snow, we were in excess flow, and we were able to test the water, and we were only at, I think we were at 76% on the first day, and then we were down to 60-something percent, 65% the second day, because the more water we have coming, the more diluted it gets. So we're working with the EPA to try to adjust that 85% level because we know it's going to be, without doing major improvements beyond this half a million, if they keep that 85%, we'll have to spend some significant dollars to try to get down to that 85%. Right now, they're willing to work with us to, we have to get the data first, and the plant fortunately only goes into excess flow maybe 10 to 12 times a year. So they're working with us right now to get the data, share with them our concerns, and show them it's going to be very difficult to get that 85%. And so they've been willing, and we're working with MWRD.
Yeah, I'm pretty optimistic that we'll be able to get them to agree to a different percentage on this.
So hopefully, we'll be able to...
And all we'll have to do is line it.
That's the plan.
Did you want to say something, John? You're looking like, "All right, I'm just checking." Thanks. There aren't any questions about that. We move on to page 26, new project, our aerobic digester rehab. You all took tours of that recently, and the aerobic part was where we call the bug vault. That's because that's those bugs, and they eat it when it comes in. I need...
Gems.
Go ahead.
Right. If you have the map for this project, it's the four white square shapes at the bottom, towards the bottom of the site. Those are basically fabric covers. With the winds that we get down there and with age, those start to deteriorate and start to shred and need to be replaced. The actual framing that holds those tarps on there are starting to erode as well, so we're looking at either having to replace that. But what we're proposing is totally eliminating those and actually go with a flat aluminum or fiberglass cover that will actually be safer because every time the guys enter into this building, it's considered a confined space because of the fumes that could be in there. So they have to monitor the oxygen levels and all that. This will eliminate that. They'll be able to monitor from a hatch looking down into it and avoid having to go into a confined space. So that's the plan with that one.
And we've had the existing ones for over 30 years.
Yeah, they've been in place for quite a while. I know we've had to replace them pretty often.
And you can see, we have that out for two years, in 18, 19, and 19, 20.
Do you think they're going to last that long?
We just replaced one this past year within the, I thought we just, we made repairs on them. So hopefully, we'll be able to get by with just some minor repairs and be able to get it through. Again, this is one of those things that the Facility Plan will tell us what the best fiberglass or aluminum will be. And from there, we'll be able to adjust, in future capital programs, we'll be able to adjust from there.
Moving on then to page 28 is our last sewer issue, and that is our blower replace... Is that the one we just did?
No. This is a new project. The blowers there are, again, have seen better days, 40-years-old.
They're all right.
They're in need of replacement, and the technology over 40 years has changed drastically. We're looking at going to a more efficient turbo blower. We believe there's grant funds out there that we would be applying for, for this, to help with those costs. And from there, you know, again, this is another one of those Facility Plan Updates will tell us what the best blower is and what type of savings we'll see in energy and what type of grants will be available too, so...
If you guys did receive a grant, would you guys push that date up? Because right now, it looks like it's in the budget 2018 and 19?
Probably, yeah. We would apply for it, and it'd be a matter of when that grant hits, and we'd be coming to the board for approval, put it into the capital at that point.
That's all for the sewer. A streets item, page 47. These are the IDOT intersection improvements along 59.
Yeah. What this is, we've talked quite a bit about the work that IDOT has planned for intersections along 59. As you know, Sterns and 59, there's plans. Wes Barlett is out now a few years, but there's going to be work there. And then Route 20 and 59, they have plans for that as well. Each one of these require cost share, like the emergency preemption equipment, the opticom equipment that allows the police and fire to get through. That's a cost that we have to pay for. Bike paths, sidewalks, that type of stuff would be stuff that would be our share. We also have fire hydrants that need to be relocated. Any utility that would be in conflict would be ours to relocate if it's in there right away. So we thought that it made sense to start programming these in since they're going to be coming our way.
We also have been talking to IDOT. They asked if we wanted any median treatment along 59 by the Sterns Road improvement. And some towns do the stamped concrete, or they have trees, or they have native grasses. And we've been talking to them about bidding that separately, so when it's bid, we can bring it to you and say, show you some pictures and say, "Does this look like it's worth it? If we don't want to, it's fine." So that buys us a little bit of time, and will give you the ability to make that decision farther along when we're able to see what it's going to cost. If there aren't any questions on that, then the last one is our Sterns Road culvert on page 66.
This one, if you're familiar with the culvert that crosses, and it has the pedestrian bridge that crosses the creek. Pedestrian Bridge is in need of replacement at this point, and we actually had a structural review, and we had to do some interim repairs on the bridge to get us by until we can get the full work done. While we were looking at it, if you remember that area, there's, the road gets narrow because you've got a guardrail right along each side of the road, and then you've got the pedestrian bridge right next to the road. The thought here is to eliminate the bridge. There's a box culvert underneath the road. We're looking to extend the box culvert on the north side, and basically, we would be able to put in a curb instead of a guardrail, put a parkway in, and then put the bike path there next to the end of the box culvert with a fence along there so that people on the bike path don't fall into the creek. This will provide better separation between the bike path and the road, and I think it'll help clean that congested area. Right now, where you've got basically guardrails that, we actually replaced both of them this year because they were hit by vehicles, and I see that the one that we just replaced on the north side got hit again. So if we can get rid of those guardrails and put curbs in, I think it'll help clean that section up. So that's the plan with this one.
And this is MFT-eligible, so we've got the funds to do that. That ends the projects that are new, that you have not seen before, and most of these you'll see for many years until they reach their maturity. If you would like, then we can go over the projects that will be placed in the operating budget this winter and will be part of your plan then, if you would like to do that.
Just one thing on the bridge that you're talking about. I'm assuming that you'll be scheduling the construction for that when school is not on because that would be a mess when Centennial is...
That would be the plan. Right now, the probably the longest part of the whole thing will be getting the permits because you're dealing with a creek, therefore, you're dealing with the Army Corps and DNR. So we're planning, it's probably going to be a year of just going through that process. But when we do get the approvals to be able to build it, yeah, the plan would be to do it during the summer to avoid the school here.
Sure that those residents would like that improved, too, that live on the other side, right by that bridge? I don't know how they get in the other driveway.
Yeah.
And you mentioned this area. Do you guys periodically, does the public works periodically check these creeks for blockage?
Yeah, we watch it all the time, and a lot of times, it's beavers downstream that are blocking it. Because we watch, we know what the water level, normal water level is, and Bob and Keith are always looking at it, and we're calling the county forest preserve to say, "Hey, we think the beavers are..."
First time in 22 years down at my cul-de-sac, a beaver gnawed a tree down and it fell in the water.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
They've been active.
State have open season in the yard.
Call the coyotes.
No, we can get the coyotes. Actually, chief, you can move the coyotes in there.
Yeah, that's what we were thinking.
Put a little beach in. You could have a whole pelt business.
And we digress. Comments once again. Thank you, Dan. So the projects that are funded through the operating...
Want to go through those? Then that begins. In the water, all of the, I think most of these projects, all of these projects you've seen before, but their time is up. So in the Water Department, page three. Water main replacement, multi-year project that we try to keep up with so we experience fewer breaks as we go along. You want to talk about how we identify those?
Yeah. Basically, our guys know where they spend most of their time with water main breaks. We start getting a history, and if it gets to a point where we're spending more time patching it, at some point, it's time to replace it because you're just going to keep being back there over and over and over again. And that's what you'll see in these out years. We've already kind of earmarked a bunch of roads that we've had issues with, and we did North Hale this year, which was a problem area, and these other areas are in need of replacement.
Thank you. Page five, water tank painting. You can see the years that we have identified, working through the tanks through town. And you want to talk a little bit about that, what they cost per painting and how we're going to do it?
Right. If you'll recall, we had the Oneida Tower in the budget this year, and the bids came in very high. So we're planning to go out to bid this winter with the option of a spring painting, a fall of 2016 painting, or a spring of 2017, just to give flexibility and see what the best pricing gets us. Because that's our most expensive tower because it's got the legs, so it has more surface area. It also is compounded because it's got lead. So we have to put the curtain on there and blast it down to bare metal and start over again. So that one is our most expensive. And you'll see Vill Olivia's after that. That one, if you've been by it, is in need of painting. We don't expect that one to be nearly as much, only because it's a spheroid, and we believe there's not lead in that tower, so...
Hopefully, we can change the way that's painted, put Village Bartlet and Vill Olivia on the stem.
That will be discussed.
Will be discussed.
With regards to the Vill Olivia Tower, is that all Bartlet, or do we share that with the Park District or anything of that nature? How's that work?
It's our tower.
It's ours.
So we can put Bartlet Hills on it if we want.
Absolutely.
Bartlet Hills this way.
Yeah, with the big...
With an arrow, the address.
There you go, Ray. I think the village logo on it would be really nice.
Get to that. Sewer, those are the only two waters that you'll see water projects in this coming operating budget. So we're on to sewer again. On page 12 is the phosphorus removal system.
And what the costs are here, this is the cost for the Facility Plan Update. Because they're, along with looking at the treatment plant, they're, one of their main focuses is how to deal with phosphorus. If you recall, working through the DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group, we were able to buy 10 years before we have to meet the phosphorus limit with the EPA. So those projects aren't even in here because it's out eight to 10 years. But they're going to be looking at it now because the permit requires us to put a plan together showing chemical option, biological option, what the costs and what the pros and cons are. So Strand will be looking at that and giving us the best solution for that. What these costs are down below is the DRSCW is at the DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group. Part of that agreement requires us to put in, you see the $30,000, the $31,000. We have, because of the savings we're seeing by not having to implement phosphorus right now, we take a portion of that and put it towards improvements to the DuPage River and Salt Creek. So that group is working on improvements, removal of dams, shoreline stabilization, those type of things that help improve the rivers. And EPA said that that is a benefit to the ecosystem, and so they allowed us to do the 10-year delay in the phosphorus.
It still saves us money.
Saves us, oh, yeah. Definitely saves us.
Saves us a lot of money. We don't have to give them all of our savings. Page 37, or excuse me, page 14 is our system analysis, our sanitary sewer system evaluation.
Right. This is where we are, we purchased the video camera, sewer camera, this year. And so we have a combination. We have, our guys are videoing sewers regularly, they're cleaning sewers regularly, and from that, they find out where there's collapsed sections, where there's cracks. And if they need to make repairs, we've actually started our first time of repairing our own sewers, which is saving us lots of money. But at the same time, we don't have to repair all of them. If they have cracks, but they can get a liner in, we're lining. We actually just completed a portion up in the North Hale, in that area. We, the contractor, completed about half the project right before Thanksgiving, and then they'll be coming back in January, February to do the rest of the project. So this SSES budget every year is going to be televising, cleaning, and then repairing or lining sewers throughout the town.
Dan, how's your staff liking the, using the televising equipment? Is it going well? Do they like...
They love it. They love being able to use the equipment. They know the system better because they know where the problem areas are, and then they can keep an eye on those. And we're saving... Line everything.
And we're saving money.
We're saving money.
There you go.
And you don't have to send that guy down there to rock through there anymore.
That's right.
Thank you.
Did you guys take a tour of that when you guys started the sewer?
Moving on to the streets, the other portion in street is page 45, and that is our, yeah, the building addition. Did I do that right?
Forty...
Oh, did I skip? Which one are we?
Road program, 37.
Page 37. Not into the...
This is just our, we're getting back to the typical road program that we did prior to the bond issue, where we spend roughly 900, 930 per year doing grind and overlay essentially of our worst-conditioned roads. Bob and his crew are, we've had the evaluation of the roads, so now they're, during this winter, are going through picking the roads that need to be done. They've narrowed it down, and we'll be submitting a project to IDOT for approval for construction next spring and summer.
The next program we'll talk about is page forty-five in streets, and that is the street garage project, which we have begun. Forty-five. Let me do the building now. Forty-five, street garage addition.
Garage? I think that's on forty-nine.
Oh, it's the right page. Okay.
There you go, forty-nine.
The street garage, we, you guys, earlier this year, I tried to bid that out, and the bids came in high. We rejected them, and we've been moving forward with it. We are actually scheduled to pour the floor Thursday. The nice thing there is we had our crews install all the sewer, water, storm sewer. They dug the trench for the concrete foundation wall. They did the excavation of the dirt to get down to the clay, brought in the stone. So we saved a lot of money having our crews do that work. We've hired a contractor to do the concrete, and they're going to be pouring Thursday. So we'll have a floor. Now, the next issue that I'm trying to deal with is getting a carpenter to frame it up and get that done, but we're working on that, and hopefully, during this winter, we'll be able to get it framed up and have it ready this spring. Been going well, and the guys have jumped on it and enjoyed, I think, something different, and it's theirs, you know? It's going to be theirs. So I think there's some excitement there. They're seeing progress, and it's coming, so it's been good.
Going to a barn-raising party when we're done?
Yeah, I think we should.
If we've got some carpenters handy, we can use them.
I think it's long overdue after being out there a few times.
Yes.
Moving on to economic development then, on page fifty-two, we have the Brewster Creek Business Park Improvement. Do we know who's?
What page is that?
Fifty-two.
These are your typical work that we do in the business park with the TIF district. What's, and you've seen a lot of the evidence that Brewster Creek has done a lot of land reclamation. They're putting in some additional stormwater detention areas and some of the distribution systems for the new buildings that we anticipate going particularly along Sterns Road. There's a couple that are in line, and then also on Brewster Creek Boulevard, and you'll see some of those projects coming in next year, but they have to do some of the preliminary work to get those sites ready.
And then the next one, just our other TIF.
The next one is our other district in the Blue Heron Business Park, and we've talked about that. You're seeing some activity there. Our first building is under construction, and soon we'll get occupancy in a couple weeks, Brian said, and then the owner has two additional buildings that he's done some site preparation again. The sanitary is going to start being installed in that business park, and then we hope to have at least two buildings next year. So again, site preparation for those, north side as well as on the south side, east of what is the Bartlett Point West subdivision. There's, there's the road work that's going in there. You're going to see Southwind Boulevard completed around to the tower, as well as what they call Benchmark Lane, which will be kind of just parallel with West Bartlett Road. So those are part of the TIF and redevelopment plan.
Jim, is there, maybe you could address on capital improvements for Brewster Creek? I don't mean to skip backwards here, but I continually hear people talk about our serious parking issue out there.
Right.
And did we underestimate the amount of cars that were going to be parked in some of these locations out there, or the number of semis coming in and out of there?
I think what we did is we underestimated the success of the companies that you're seeing them fill out their existing facilities. Right now, we are working with two parking lot expansions. One is the Get Fresh Building. They are moving to the south side of Sterns Road where some of this land reclamation is being done. They're going to be building a temporary parking lot now for the trucks, as well as they are moving their employees over to the ITW site. So we're going to see those trucks moved off that street, and then they will be, that's a temporary parking lot, I think they got a year, and then they're hopefully going to be building a new building, is what they're telling us. And then Rana Pasta, we're currently reviewing plans for Rana Pasta to do a building expansion on the east side of the building, and then as well, on the west side, they're building a parking lot for a hundred and eight vehicles. That will again be a temporary lot that they will hopefully follow up with in a year and a half or so with a new building going west towards where the ACE relocation building is currently at. So those are the two that we're addressing right now. And then, I can't think of, there's another one that we have, but there are some buildings that have what we call land bank parking, and so far, they haven't had to exercise the land banking, but they will, if and when they do, they will be, there's additional parking available on those sites, and those will expand as the company. Triple D, that's the other one. Triple D Trucking is also doing another parking lot expansion for his trucks, because what's really happened out there is the companies have been very successful and have, you know, they're bursting at the seams with employees, and obviously, the parking is a consequence of that.
Yeah, that's one of my concerns, is when the new companies come in there, and then the first thing they look at is, oh, my gosh, this is, this is a mess.
Yeah, we've had.
The semis all over and.
Exactly. There's a company that, fortunately, they closed on the property on Sterns Road, but they were hesitant to do so until Get Fresh at least put in the plans for their parking lot, for their getting those trucks off the street. So it's a combination of that, and whether we need to institute a full trucking or parking ban or an overnight parking ban in there, that's something that we'll probably revisit once we see these temporary lots built and see how that relieves some of that congestion.
Also, we're hoping that PACE's presence and their different kinds of programs that they're going to begin instituting out there will really have some impact. We've organized, I think, one meeting with PACE and some of the bigger companies out there, and PACE is very flexible. They'll do van pools of any size, any time of day. They'll do them at night, so hopefully, if they get a lot of.
That's right.
Takers on that, we'll be able to reduce the cars as well.
Yeah, they met, they met with four or five of the companies and have, trying to get them to instill this van pool program.
It was good that they were.
They've talked about it at the open house.
Yeah, it was good that they were at that meeting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The last project is on page sixty-four. This one you saw last year as well, and that is fixing our drainage problem we have along West Bartlett Road.
Right, there's a section on the south side of West Bartlett that when we get rain, it stays wet on the path for a long period. So we're looking at, this would be the engineering to take a look at what we can do to try to, what we're thinking we would be able to do is pipe it, bury it, and then put the path above the pipe. That's what we're hoping to be able to do. So again, that requires all the permitting, because you're dealing with a creek that you have to pipe. So this will get the engineering that will help tell us what we can and can't do. So that's what this was, would be for.
Dan, since this happens to be the church that I attend, one of the maintenance people at the church came to me the other day and said, apparently, the ditch in front of that church doesn't drain well. Is that the result of this problem with the creek?
It's all part of it.
And so will that affect that ditch, or will the ditch in front of the church actually further to the west have to be dug up and a new culvert or new ditch made or some sort? I don't know.
Part of it will be, well, if we, if we're able to put it in a pipe, and we'll get, a lot of that ditch will go away, but we won't know until we find out what they're going to allow us to do. But it should, well, mine is, we would plan to improve that whole situation.
Right, because water just.
Problem is, it's pretty flat, so there's not a lot of grade to work with. That's why we're thinking if we put it in a pipe, it'll be buried, so you won't really see it at that point, and it'll keep the path dry and all that, but we've got to see what we can do.
Well, it certainly has a lot of standing water in that ditch right now, so if it helped drain it, it'd be a good thing.
You can actually fill it up and use it for baptism.
You could, I suppose. You're a funny guy tonight, aren't you?
Somebody's got to be entertaining in capital meetings.
I guess.
Any way we can get that drainage water to go over to the golf course and?
We plug it, because that's where it's coming from.
Send it back.
And that's the end.
Oh, darn it.
Thank you very much.
We're bringing this forward on another agenda for formal.
Okay, and that concludes our finance and golf committee item. It's entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Very informative.
It was.
By trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?